Okay, so we will go to the council meeting. Welcome, everyone. And we've already done a call to order, pledge allegiance, all staffs here and council members. And we are at the consent calendar, A through H. And if there's something you guys want to discuss further, let me know. If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar as presented.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent calendar, A through H.
Okay, we got a motion by Councilman Galbraith, a second by Councilman, we're going to approve the consent calendar, A through H. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, against, pass unanimous. So we will go to public comment. This is something that you'd speak about that's not on the agenda, and state your name and address for the record. Someone wants to come on up?
It's you, Jeannie.
Hi, me.
Yeah.
Yeah. Come on down.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Jeannie McLennan, and on behalf of the 2015 Cedar Woolley Lager Rodeo Board, we would like to present the City of Cedar Woolley with a $3,000 check for the continued support of the downtown flower baskets.
Appreciate it.
Awesome.
I got the message. Thank you. I won't lose that. Pass it down. Thank you. Okay, anyone else? No? So we will close the public comment, and we will go to unfinished business. This is, there's none, so I guess we will go to new business. And this would be the River Road, Washington Department of Fish and Wildlife Land Use Agreement, and this would probably be Aaron again.
Yeah, so we had a concern raised during the budget process from our Ways for Our Treatment Plant Collection Operations Crew about the maintenance of the toilets at the boat launch at Riverfront Park. They've been doing that work for some number of years, and the thinking was, we have a vector truck, so why not? You go out, you vac out the porta potty, hose her down, and keep it, keep it nice. The trouble that they run up against is that the Sandy Can companies use a deodorizer or some sort of chemical that they put in that helps keep it fresh, that when you use a vector truck such as ours, it creates foam, and the foam kind of blocks the ball at the top of the truck that's used to allow air to escape so liquid can fill the truck. And the result is that they get a, you know, tinged mist coming out of the truck onto the worksite. So they didn't find that to be highly appealing. They discontinued the use of the Sandy Can deodorizer type chemicals, which, you know, kind of further led to the restrooms odor issues. So they go out there and hose it and clean it. They've also had just an ongoing issue over the years. I think Nathan could probably detail it with, you know, garbage, you know, toilet paper runs out, people throw, you know, a shirt in, or just whatever. There've been needles, folks from out of town come over there and use that. And so, you know, lots of issues at the restroom. So that came up as a question, as we're looking at 2015 workload and budget, why are we doing this bathroom? So I asked Nathan, why are we doing this bathroom? It's owned by the Washington State Department of Fish and Wildlife. He didn't know, but he got me an answer. And that's what's on page 121 of your packet. So it was a serendipitous request from our collections crew. In 1990, June, the City of Cedar Woolley entered into a 25-year agreement to manage and maintain the WDFW boat launch and bathroom. That agreement expires this year in May, but if we do not terminate it by 90 days prior to May, which is, you know, next month, then it automatically, automatically renews for an additional 25 years. So we kind of stumbled into some institutional knowledge that was lacking. And as near as we can tell, and Nathan, jump in if I miss something, the city basically agreed to do the maintenance work in consideration of an IAC grant that allowed for the improvement of the facility. With that, the facility is also open to the general public free of charge. So we're not allowed to charge, state doesn't charge, it's just open. If we discontinue this contract, it would become a standard WDFW boat launch site. They'd maintain their toilet on their regular rotation as they do all the rest of their sites, and it would no longer be a free site. It would become a Discover Pass site, just like the rest of them. We, the city, on the other hand, would no longer be down there worrying about grading gravel or cleaning the toilets or anything of that nature. It would be a WDFW-owned and maintained facility. So the other potential, of course, is right now, it's basically our facility to manage and keep up. If we turn it back to them, I think it would be fair to assume that there's the possibility that there's some risk that the state could choose not to fund it at some point. So we didn't feel comfortable at the executive branch just making a decision to send a termination notice because ultimately it's a policy question for the city council of whether you want this to continue to be kind of a city facility that's city managed and maintained at city expense for the benefit of general public, or whether you're comfortable with us pulling back our resources and letting the state manage and maintain the state's facility and just have it fall under those general rules. Nathan, did I miss anything?
I got, I got a question. So I can drive down there, even though I've never used it, but I can park my, my truck down there, my car, and not worry about getting a, you know, I have a, I have a Discover Pass. But if I didn't have one, I can park it down there now, they don't ticket you.
Right.
But if I go down South Skagit, and I park on the South Skagit Highway, and I walk down Finney Creek or somewhere, I have to have a Discover Pass. There's parts along, you know, South Skagit where you have to have a Discover Pass. There's not even parking. I don't understand that. But, I mean, I understand they're, you know, why, why they don't bother you here.
You know, money.
Or, and I'm a big believer in user fees, so I mean, you know, and I would assume most of the people that go down there now probably have Discover Passes. I don't know. And at the same time, we didn't have a restroom. Now we have a nice restroom right up the hill from there, you know, that flushes and everything. Doesn't make sense that we take care of this and put our guys at risk with the needles. I mean, that's the big thing I always kept hearing, was the drug use down there. They use that for a place to shoot up. I don't know. I'm, I don't have a problem with closing it. I don't think they're going to shut down. Then I'm wrong, I could be wrong. That would be up to the people who use it to get a hold of their state legislators and keep that open.
I think we're, there's two passes, I think we may have them confused.
It could be the WDFW, the hunting type pass.
Yeah, you get that with your fishing license.
That's not it.
Did they tell you Discover, or did they tell you the other one?
Discover Pass costs 30 bucks. That's for State Parks.
That seems like it'd be the WDFW one.
Yeah, but I see it at, at boat launches for, that are fish and wildlife Discover Pass signs.
Maybe, and/or. Do that with my boat.
I don't know. Either way, I mean, the point is, they would manage it and they would decide, you know, how it gets used.
And people could complain to them when it's not managed properly.
Correct. It's not, it's not a city facility. I mean, but part of what got me looking at this, in addition to that, is we've had some calls down there, and the question is, is this even in the city limits? I think it probably is, but it's a little hard to tell.
What does it cost, what does it cost the city for doing this?
Well, basically, you've got crew time. I think they run down there twice a week, especially during fishing season, so, you know, it just pulls them away from other collection duties. And I don't know, we'd probably do some grading down there occasionally.
And that, that we can still do. I mean, you know, I just don't like the idea that, why have, why have that, why duplicate service? You have a nice restroom right up the hill from there. They can walk half a block, maybe, and use.
And the trouble, of course, is if the restroom is dirty, they don't actually use it. You know, that's, that's what our crew observes, is when the porta potty is not pleasant, you know, it's primarily men, and they just simply go around the tree, or just use the exterior of the facility, you know, as a, as a urinal type space. So, you know, it just complicates it because there's more to clean, and, and they're kind of looking at it going, you know, we don't, in fact, the question was, can we just tear that thing out and get a porta potty and just pay to rent it? So then that got me thinking, well, who should pay? It's not a city facility.
Well, that's what they did to Clear Lake, didn't they? They just ripped those bathrooms out without question, put these nasty porta potties there, and Clear Lake Beach is better.
Yeah, well, the difference is.
Rachel'll have a new restroom by spring, supposedly.
Oh, really?
This is, this is just a porta potty, though. I mean, it's a permanent porta potty, so that's the difference. At least with a porta potty, you get weekly service, so they come out with the deodorizer and restock it and do all their business, so.
Well, this agreement is a bad agreement, as it's written, because it puts all of the responsibility on the city, and they get to be in charge of saying whether we can do it or not. At the very least, I would not want to go forward with this agreement. Maybe something that's a little more favorable to us, or nothing at all.
Yeah, I agree with you. I think if you want it, you know, you might as well have it. I mean, if we're going to manage it and own all the risks, they could also just give it to us. On the other hand, someday you're going to have to rebuild a boat launch, and I suspect that's a fairly expensive proposal with in-water work and everything that goes with that. Might be better borne by the taxpayers of the state of Washington than by the limited resources of the taxpayers of Cedar Woolley. But, yeah, that's why it's brought to you. It's a, definitely a policy question about what you'd like to do.
Well, the main question is, do you want it available for free for your citizens, or do you want them to have to have a Discover Pass? That's the main, main thing. If you go down there twice a week, I don't know what those people get paid, but you got to guess, you know, 50, 75 bucks an hour twice a week.
It's crew of two and a truck, back truck. I don't know what, do you have any idea what we charge out for our back truck with crew? Truck, we charge 70 an hour for that.
So say, say 70 for two guys.
Oh, no, 70 for the truck.
140 bucks twice a week, times 52, pretty expensive.
And they don't go year-round, you know, they don't have to go twice a week other than during fishing season.
Cut it to six months, just for your estimations, and it's still expensive.
Yeah, oh, there's no question. And the reason it was raised is it was becoming burdensome.
Yeah, so it's not like it would save, really save money, per se, if the state did it. It's just a risk, mostly, or?
Well, it saves us time and equipment time. I mean, it's the same as money. It's basically being able to utilize our crew to do their job rather than porta potty maintenance.
Yeah, but if things go south in that, you're going to have a room full of fishermen in here bitching and screaming about what's going on with it.
Well, it's the state's, I mean, and I don't think we shouldn't act because the state might not fund it. I mean, because we can always act at that point if they decide not to.
Well, I mean, if, if you're interested in, in kind of what Keith had suggested, we could certainly send them a letter giving notice and expressing an interest and having further conversations about how we might restructure our partnership to ensure that the resource is available, but that we're not real keen on 25 more years of this agreement. But we're open to conversations because we value keeping it open to the community.
It's a good start, a good tack.
A ton of fishermen, a lot of people come from all over. Watcom, Snohomish Counties and use that launch because you've got to be a member of the Steelhead Club to use the other one. And there isn't another launch until you get quite a ways upriver.
Well, do you have to go up to Howard Miller or something?
You can dump.
No, there's one in Hamilton.
Yeah, you can dump.
You know, they're, well-maintained, semi-private boat launches, but their ramps and things aren't like this one, and, you know, Howard Miller is ways up there, but a lot of guys want to fish here and down to Burlington.
Burlington's awesome.
They've got a real nice one.
Yeah. Well, so, I guess we're looking for a motion, whichever way, however you'd like to do it, and if you're not comfortable tonight, we can always talk about it next meeting, and we have 90 days.
You need a motion to write the letter?
Yeah, if, if the letter is to give a notice and to express our desire to continue some new partnership, then, yeah, I think we're looking for council action, so we, you know.
I think we should mull it over till the next meeting.
And that's, we've got time. We've got 90 days.
Yeah, I'm going to please to do our.
Section 12 termination is a 90-day written notice before the end of the term. And of course, they can cancel it if we violate any terms, but that's a one-sided provision. And the term ends May 31 of 15, so.
End of February.
We've got the next month.
So by when do we need to bring this back? Next meeting?
Do it at next meeting.
Yeah, we can just bring it back if you'd like. Okay?
Yes.
Well, then we'll have it on the agenda as a continued, be old business next time.
Can we get, can we write a, you know, a draft letter in the meantime, and then look at that next meeting?
Yeah, would you like me to?
I think, I think that would be a start, I mean, something we could do in the meantime.
So something along the lines of what Keith described?
Just under advantageous circumstances.
Okay.
Most of the time, 4:00 in the morning. You don't want to tax fishing.
Well, okay, all right. How do you go about finding out if it's in the city? So we're going to pay for someone.
Well, I think it is. I mean, the GIS map show it, it's just, it's a little.
Brings a lot of revenue into the.
A little fuzzy, you know, when you try to match the aerial to the photo. And the question comes up about whether it's our police department, and then whether Dean bills or doesn't bill when he goes there. And that's, I probably just need to have somebody who's more technically proficient at GIS take a closer look at that.
Get your GPS thing, go stand there and look.
Yeah, well, it's a comparison of the city limit boundaries that would have been adopted some time ago down there with what's actually on the ground.
Okay, we will go to, we're done with that, you know, what to do, council, item six, council organization matters. And this would be our, on it is your meeting's schedule for next year. Also, I need to get some input from you guys. Our mayor pro tem is the same one, excuse me, our mayor pro tem is the same one that we've had last year. Keith, we'll go again another year. That was according to the, to the motion.
Yeah, the council adopted, took action January 8 of 2014 to, to appoint a mayor pro tem for a biennial period that ends December 31 of 2015. So Councilman Waggoner is mayor pro tem for this year, and then January of 2016, you know, as the council reorganizes, you'd be selecting a mayor pro tem for the 16, 17 biennial period. So what we're looking for tonight would be action on the meeting dates. You acted as Transportation Benefit District Board earlier. We're looking for council action on the council calendar, and then also if we're able to get the committee assignments in, or if you're just going to give feedback to the mayor next time.
Which, which committee, like one? If you guys could give me a call that you might be, that you really have to be on or something. Let me know. If not, I will, you know, sort them out like I did, I've done in the past.
I like to do business when.
Let me know, call me or email me or whatever, and then, and then I can fix it for the next council meeting.
Do you have a telegraph in your office?
I don't know. I can do with lights or something.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to entertain some discussion about the night that we have city council. As you know, I've been talking about this for two years, and I'm going to talk about it again because I'm missing wrestling, Burlington versus Cedar Woolley right now. Wrestling's Wednesday night. I don't know why we have to have this on Wednesday. I would like to see it moved to Tuesdays.
You're one person for two months out in the year, and I think a lot of people leave town, long weekends, Tuesday might be one, and they may not be able to attend that either.
Maybe, but we moved it, when I first started, it wasn't a Tuesday. I mean, it wasn't a Wednesday.
Yeah, it's been Wednesday.
I was talking about the work session was Tuesdays. We just changed.
We have the work session, but the general meeting on Wednesdays?
We did that.
Are you talking the entire schedule?
I'd like to see the entire schedule.
Like me, I've, I've got stuff going on all the time, and for the whole year, I just block out all Wednesdays. And I got Thursday stuff most, quite often, Tuesday stuff, Monday stuff. Friday's clear.
No.
Yeah, just turn down the job offer for Wednesday nights.
Well, that won't work. Friday night doesn't work for me. And Monday night doesn't, because it's Monday night football.
We could go back to the Tuesday work session. That's a compromise.
That's one. Yeah, I don't, I don't care, Tuesday or Wednesday night.
Wednesdays.
Well, you could always have a nice lunch meeting, you know, right, right in the middle of the day, we have a nice lunch and meet.
Something like that.
Yeah. City's buying? I can't find my.
New time doesn't work for me.
We could meet at the merch wear.
Breakfast meeting.
Friday afternoons don't work.
Well, you do council meetings at 7:00 AM Wednesdays at the bakery.
I never know where I might be at any given day, at any given time, so.
How about that?
Yeah, but Friday afternoons, usually you have safety meetings, don't you?
Not anymore.
Not anymore? You guys are kidding.
Those are Friday evening days.
I'll have to go try the school on that one. All right, well, I'm sensing I don't have enough support to carry this, but I would say we're all happy to get our pictures taken when, at the end of the season, when everybody wins, but it'd be nice if you actually went to them.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt the meeting calendar for the year of 2015 as listed for Wednesday evenings.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion by Councilmember Lenley, second by Councilmember Sandstrom to approve the schedule that's presented, and that for sure our meetings are on Wednesdays. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
I know when I'm beat.
Against? Okay, there's your chance to be against it.
Sorry, Keith. Got to try, I'll try next year.
Hey, it took me years to move it from Monday night to Wednesday.
Oh, you're the blame.
Yeah. Because of Monday night football. Okay, do we need any? Well, if we had Monday night football, we might get done quicker. Yeah, yeah, you're right about that. I don't know if you can get any faster.
They closed the kitchen down there. What time, 8?
If you said 8, we'd be getting done at 8.
9:30 now.
Oh, they went late. Oh, good.
Okay, so now we need to go to committee reports and reports from the officers, and we'll start with Chief Tucker.
Just something short, we've made job offers to two brand-new recruits to get them on the list, to get them an academy date, and we're hoping for a March 10 academy date. That's our closest, we may get one in there. I'm trying to get them to go to the same academy date so they can kind of have a, have a team thing going on. But our next academy date's March 31st. We interviewed another subject, hopefully to get three of them going to the academy at the same time. We're still working through our list. We've, probably by the end of this week, we'll start looking at lateral applicants. Again, we've had a few more come in after our initial push that maybe somebody we can pick up and just put out on the street faster. So we're getting some level of movement, but it takes some time. I'm hoping that if everything goes well, we'll have at least two, maybe three new officers on the street, probably November, December timeframe, that's how long it'd take to get them up and running and do the academy and training.
Good, 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 good.
And that's it for me.
Chief Klinger.
Well, Nathan laughed, I, I don't want to. Give him an attaboy in the street department crew during that last little bit of flood stuff we had. It was nice to be able to, when people were calling, is to be able to refer them to, to them for assistance, and they, they did a good job. Other than that, we do have some more holes in our residency program. We have another test scheduled for this Sunday, so if you may notice anybody that meets minimums, which are on the city website, they can pick up an application there.
What's the age again?
18.
Arliss is too young.
Age is a state of mind, come on.
I think it'd be Agda.
Right. Age discretion, you can't do that, that's right.
John?
The county commissioners passed a resolution on their 2014 comprehensive plan docket, and they, it did choose to modify the Cedar Woolley UGA modification request. So what they've, what they've docketed has pretty much gutted our request. So I'm going to be referring that issue to the city council's planning committee to discuss where to go next with this issue. And then you'll probably see over the next couple of weeks, some dirt being moved over in the Cook Road and Trail Road area. We've got three projects that are getting close to being ready to break ground over there. So if you got any questions about what's going on, if you see stuff happening, it's all permitted.
What is it?
We've got a 12-unit apartment complex on Trail Road, and then a physical therapy office going in on Cook Road, and then, not quite ready, but a 22-lot short, long plot at the corner of Cook and Trail on the east side of Trail Road. And the council already passed the preliminary plot on that, you may remember that a couple months ago. They're getting close to being done with their construction plans and maybe getting started here shortly, hopefully, maybe.
Who's putting in the compartment complex?
It's a Grandview Homes project.
Okay, thank you.
Mark?
With your approval of the consultant agreement tonight, we'll start the design work for Jameson SR9 arterial project in the next couple of weeks. We're looking to have the design finished by the end of June this year and be in position for the next round of TIB construction funding in August. Other than that, David's working on the Green Street project. You may have seen PUD has started their parallel project to put a new, replace the water line in, in Green Street, Virginia, and Dean.
Oh, he already approved it.
They'll temporary patch that, and then they will participate in the permanent paving after we do the sewer work in those same streets this summer. As you know, we had quite a bit of rainfall on the evening of the 4th and throughout the day on the 5th. We recorded 3.21 inches of rain at the treatment plant, is one of the higher recordings in the county. Actually, Mount Vernon had two and a half, I heard, and a quarter somewhere in that same vicinity. That's slightly bigger than a 25-year event. As we're beginning to see, that's the second one of that magnitude we've had in the last two, three years, so, of course, that just means there's a 20, there's a, you know, a chance of that occurring every 25 years, but it may happen every year for 25.
I thought we had 50 years of credit now.
Yeah. Anyway, we didn't sustain any major damage. We did have a blocked storm line, drain line on SR9 up by DNR. A bag of, a plastic bag full of pop cans got lodged in a restriction in the pipe and caused some undermining of the asphalt and those things. We responded and repaired that. The region has been declared a federal disaster. They've recorded about $2.5 million in damage throughout the, the area due to that two- to three-day storm. That's not the first this year, but that's the most recent. And we did spend enough money in repairing the line to, to request reimbursement, and we're going to do that. We still have to go in and do a permanent pavement patch at some point, but we'll, we'll get that involved in the thing as well. That's pretty much it for public works.
Did you see that the rainfall put potholes in SR9, kind of throughout the system, and we could get those repaired under the same theory? I think it was the hard rain.
I thought it was going to say anything.
I've got a late materials item that's on your daze. It's a joint purchasing interlocal between the city and Skagit 911. It's the same form document we've done with a number of other entities. We've got one out right now, well, you approved it last meeting, actually, with Snohomish County Fire, I don't know, 17? How many, 24? This one will allow us to piggyback on the dispatch center's bids last year for a 40 KW generator, which we're anticipating using at our new tower radio repeater site up on Duke Hill. So I'm looking for a motion to approve the interlocal joint purchasing agreement tonight.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the interlocal joint purchasing agreement between Skagit 911 and the City of Cedar Woolley.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion by Councilmember Waggoner, and a second by Councilmember Cornigay to approve the interlocal joint purchasing agreement between 911 and the city. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Against? Pass, unanimous.
Thank you. And also, I'd just call your attention to the FYI item. The last page in the packet is the letter from the Central Skagit Library responding to the mayor's letter from mid-December, which was in your last year's packet, just talking about opportunities to work together. We'll be following up with the new interim library director, the LaCunner Library Director, Joy Neal, and having some conversations at some point. Joy Neal, and having some conversations at some point. And then the last thing I've got is we were running into a bit of a scheduling conflict with the mayor's schedule and the AWC Legislative Action Conference. Consequently, we didn't book any hotels or anything like that. And Mike and I have been talking about just picking an alternate day for us to go down and advocate for the city's issues. So I know we had talked, I guess the last meeting, I think, and Councilman Galbraith was the only councilman that I had kind of confirmed to go that day. I think unless you want to try to find an alternate place, we could take that off the calendar and then we'll look for an alternate time and put together a, you know, maybe the same group and go down and do the, you know, the important, for those of you who haven't been there, it's basically, it's a two-day event. One day you go to the City Legislative Action Days, which is an AWC conference where they kind of talk about what's going on, on the Hill. And it's interesting, you know, if you haven't done it before, you hear from the governor and they, you know, they give you the talks. But really where the rubber meets the road is on day two and that's, or even day one, if that's when you get your appointments and that's when you leave the conference and you go up and you, you work through all the offices to talk about very specific bills and issues. And so, you know, this is a long session. I think they're day four now of 105-day session. It's shaping up to be, you know, maybe one of the more interesting sessions in state history. On the plus side, the governor's budget included the TIB program, so we're excited to see that. He did not propose a new gas tax, which I thought was interesting, given what we've been hearing. Came instead with a carbon tax, have no idea how that would work. And then the Republican Senate came in and changed their procedural rules by simple majority addressing any new taxes requiring a supermajority. So kind of the reverse of what the US Senate did by simple majority addressing the supermajority on a filibuster. So there's some, there's some, you know, newfound partisanship that hasn't been present and definitely some ideological disagreements and different power structure this year, along with a whole host of big problems. So, you know, I think we'll want to be present at some point, the question's just when. I guess that's a long way of saying, stay tuned, but if you really want to go to that particular conference, let me know, you can call me and we can, we can find a way to make arrangements. At this point, neither the mayor nor I are planning to attend.
You know what month you're thinking in your schedule? You've looked at it, I'm sure.
That was figuring. Fifteenth?
Yeah, I was thinking probably more in the early March-ish range. We'll have to look back and see when the policy cutoff dates are. In fact, I meant to check that today and I didn't.
I'll check that.
Obviously, for specific bills, we want to beat the cutoff dates or, you know, but then most things we care about are fiscal in nature and those run much longer into the session, so.
Well, we want to be there when we're not in a blur. Because I almost think you're in a blur when you go when every city's there. I mean, you're just rushing in and they get five minutes with you, 10 minutes, then you're out. I like that part, but at the same time, I want to make sure when we go, they're there. You know, they're not-
Well, it's interesting, if we show up, maybe we'll show up, we'll end up being there on, you know, Realtor Day, so they'll all be wearing red or whatever and doing that and we're the, we're the ones swimming against the tide, coming in with city issues. So yeah, I think you do have the ability to stand out a bit if you show up on an alternate day. The key, though, is really to come early and stay, stay late and go often. I mean, it's no different than what we see. It's, it's those eyeballs and just long conversations, making sure people understand what the issues are and finding the right people to advocate for those issues. It's just playing a lot of work. That's all I've got tonight.
We're finishing, we're close to finishing the year with, first year with our new software. Payroll's been wrapped up and pay, first paycheck in January will be out next week. By state law, we have to keep our payables open for last year through the 20th of January, but after that date, we'll be wrapping up 2014. So far, I'm really pleased with how the software's processed everything and the year-end reports and it looks to me like it'll be much simpler. But stay tuned, we'll keep you informed.
Kevin?
Yeah, I just, I just got an item that I'd like to bring up for future. Last year, when that company came in and their marijuana growing operation and things, they said they couldn't put it in industrial area because there's no industrial area big enough because you couldn't use it because of wetlands and stuff. I think we need to figure out if we actually do have any industrial area and how much of it is wetlands you can't use. So I would like to work on that in the future.
Which company are you thinking of?
The one that wanted to put three warehouses in to grow marijuana. They said they could not go into industrial because there was too much wetlands where it, where it was big enough.
So she's, she's still working on that same site, actually, and is now talking about five, five-story grow-up buildings that would, that would fit in. It's the Brickyard Creek, you know, setbacks and then there's also some wet areas back there behind the Schwab Building.
But my point is, industrial areas of half, half the industrial area is wetlands. We don't have the industrial area that we, you think we do. I think we need to find out if we, what we have and don't have.
As part of our 2016 UGA analysis to see if we need any additional UGA land, we'll be determining if we need additional industrial land and so the Planning Commission will be working on that. That will be part of the scope of the buildable lands analysis that the city council has approved money for in the 2015 budget. So that is exactly one of the items that the Planning Department is looking forward to working on and determining if we have a shortage of industrial land. I understand that that's been an issue that the council's been concerned about, so that's something that I've been working on for years and now that we're finally at this point where we have the opportunity to adjust our urban growth area, this is, that's within the scope of what we, we will be doing as part of the 2016 updates.
Which will tell us, like if you got 100 acres of industrial land, that'll tell us maybe 40 of it is wetlands that you can't use?
The, the, the buildable lands analysis, the detail that we do is going to depend on how much it's going to cost, so if there, ideally, yes, that's exactly what it'll tell us. Whether or not we'll have the, the financial ability to have them look at every piece of land and look at what the, the critical areas limitations are, I don't know yet. Hopefully that will be able to be in the scope with the money we've made available.
Next. Train.
Well, first I wanted to mention condolences for Coach Khan's family that we just lost and I thought we should mention him. And I had a question for you, Mark. I was wondering, how do you explain all the water that recently, with the rain that we just had underneath the trestle? We had a lot of water there, too.
Yes. What it is, is that, the elevation of that is, is roughly at the top of the, the outfall location off of FNS Grade Road near Hawthorne. And because of some restrictions downstream, notably the culverts at Life Care and the old Cedro Wully Auto, we had backwater in Brickyard Crick, even though the river was not in a backwater situation, which is another issue of flooding. The crick itself, because of the peak event that we had, was, was almost to its bank tops all the way down through the Life Care entrance. So the water just couldn't get out fast enough. And the elevation of, of the roadway there basically is such that when we get that situation, there'll be water over the roadway until it clears.
Too much to assume.
Under normal circumstances, we don't see that, but you know, we've, we've had these events. We've, we've had a couple of other occasions where we've had some water on the roadway. In those instances, we were able to clear it fairly quickly by pulling, there's a, there's a slide gate in the control structure on the east side of the trestle that we were able to pull, but that didn't work this time just because the crick was so high and that controlled the elevation of the water. We had similar situations in a number of places in town. At Brickyard Meadows on Reed Street, we had water out to the center line of the road, same thing, water just couldn't get out fast enough and, yeah, there, there are instances where that's just going to occur.
Thank you. That's it.
Brenda?
Yeah, I want to second what Jermaine said about Brad Khan. He was a real baseball icon in town. He's a Washington State Hall of Fame coach and the, the whole school and especially the ball teams are really hurting over there. So, yeah, he was young, 48-years-old, and it was a big surprise. So our hurts go out to them. That's all I have.
Thank you.
I was wondering, I run by the Reed Street property that we've just received or purchased. My question is, is there a reason that's not draining off? We're, we're ending up with, today, for example, when I was out there, there were three kids out in the middle of it and, you know, that's just accident waiting to happen. And I'm, I'm wondering, my question, I guess, is, do we have the capability to drain that off?
There is a low spot in the, in that lot that's been identified as a wetlands. It's there near the northwest corner. During this rain event, for the same reasons I discussed with Councilmember Corgay, the water just couldn't get out fast enough and so the whole lot was almost ponded. One of our intentions coming up downstream in next year is to finish the clearing, pull the storm water permit, finish the clearing and the next time we have fill available from a project, for instance, Jamison, we'll, we'll build up most of that lot. We'll have to maintain that wetland area or mitigate for it, but we'll build up most of that lot so it wouldn't be in a flood situation. So to answer your question, we, we do plan to mitigate that down, downstream.
We also weren't able to actually do the ditch maintenance that we were planning to do before the weather turned, so.
I was looking at that, that's pretty bad shape.
So that's part of, I mean, that's one of the reasons we acquired that, was to be able to access the ditch and help deal with drainage in that whole vicinity. And you may recall, they, they got out there and, I don't know, I'd almost say we were about a week late. You know, it was, we were cranking along and then all of a sudden the rain came and they were just making more mud than good. So they pulled out and will remobilize again, what do you think, spring?
Maybe so.
Summer, when it's dry. When it's dry out again. So maintaining the ditch will help quite a bit as well.
That's just a concern and you guys are on top of it. Okay. That's all I have.
Rick?
Well, like Councilman Brenton Corgay indicated that, yeah, the community in six months has lost two phenomenal community people with JB Bryson and now with, with Brad Khan. I think there's more behind the scenes with Brad than people really know, that he, from what I've been hearing from his family and his friends, that he's the guy that if any of the kids at the school had issues with, his is the desk he sat across. They got personal problems at home or at school or anything, they'd go to his house, they'd eat dinner at his dinner table, they'd sleep on his couch if need be. He's the guy that outpoured and reached out to all those kids that were in community crisis in one way or another. So, yeah, it runs deeper than what you see in his baseball career. He was quite a phenomenal man and it's going to be a major impact for the staff and students at the Cedro Wully High School. So, yeah, as you see his family over the next months and years and that, yeah, certainly express your concern and freak out to them if you can, if you know them, because 14-year-old daughter, she's going to enter high school next year and it's going to be a major meltdown for her to go there on that first day, knowing that her dad should have been there. And it's, no, not, so, yeah, they're going to need a community support, even though that they do have a, a strong support right now, but they will for a long time.
We have some of those stickers for him to, for sale. I'm going to bring them to Rotary tomorrow. And there's a fundraiser with his baseball number and they're $5 apiece. I have them, if anybody wants them, just let me know.
And there'll be a celebration of his life on Friday at 4 o'clock at the Bethany Covenant Church in Mount Vernon on South 18th. And if you know him or someone that has been touched by, by his outpouring, try to attend if you can. They're, they're anticipating 800 to 1,000 pieces of people possibly, because he's reached out all around the state and northwest in his baseball activities and, and things with that, so, yeah. They'll need us, so. Thanks.
Rick?
First, I just want to thank Lager Rodeo again for their wonderful donation and continuing this wonderful tradition. I think it goes back at least the 60s or 70s, so it's pretty cool. Thank you. And second, tomorrow night is the Chambers of Commerce After Hours thing and I think from like 4 to 7 for, I don't know if it's for chamber members or to the public, but-
It's, it's an open, 100-year celebration and open house, new open house.
Yeah, so the first Chamber of Commerce in the state of, uh, uh, Skagit County, Cedro Wully, 100 years. There's going to be music and prizes and stuff like that, so.
Empty. 4 to 7.
4 to 7.
4 to 7.
Anything else? Okay, I just have one favor of the council. You know, when Tom Storrs was on the council, he was the alternate to me to Community Action and I have a conflict most of the time getting to it. It's on Thursday at 11:00 and I need somebody, not, not this Thursday, but once a month on the Thursday, as our Community Action representative.
How long is it usually meeting?
It's an hour. You're done by noon.
It's in Mount Vernon.
It's in Mount Vernon, right there by the, you know, where they have their buildings.
I don't want to be officially their member, but I have Thursday at 11:00 off, so I could, I could-
So you, you want to-
On a primary basis, at least through summer.
If two people want to, you know, you can, because I have a hard time on that day.
I could, I could alternate with you. I mean, like one, one or two of us can make it.
So I will, the way they want it, they like to have a permanent one and an alternate. I'll, I'll point one of you guys to the permanent and one of you guys to the alternate. You guys can do it. Okay.
I know, I want to be the alternate.
Well, we'll, we'll make you both alternate and we'll get someone there and they'll be happy, because, because it's during the middle of the day and I like to work. Okay. Anything else? We need a motion?
Just one last thing. I mentioned we hired a new employee here today, Gary Sprague. He's our newest wastewater treatment plant operator, lives over on Carter, local guy. Has a Group 2 license. We were able to sort of snag him from Water, Wastewater Services, which runs a bunch of plants around. He's worked at the Laconner Plant, most recently at the New Halem and Diablo Plants, so, yeah. If you get a chance to see him, welcome him to our team. I think we'll be glad to have him.
Rick? So I need a motion adjourned.
Second.
By Lindley, second by Galbraith. All those in favor stand and thank you for coming.